So good, good afternoon. Wherever you are, if you just joined us, I'd like to say this is today Liberia Television coming live to you for the grounds of the capital building, to be specific at the Honorable House of Representatives, the regular sessions of the Honorable House of Representatives at the Gens here. So folks, I'd like to say welcome, this is today Liberia Television. We are the first in news and best in entertainment as we go over here with our live podcast here with me Jay Kasha's BD2, as a matter of fact Honorable Yekewa Koruba entered session last Thursday, Tuesday, let's get it right, last Tuesday with a trophy and today he entered with a horn, with a horn saying as to whether anybody have been that they are a resident is also most resident more than that person, but we don't know where does the horn go and he was entered in session, we met with the horn and the horn were with him. So a few minutes ago he took out the horn. So you see Honorable Yekewa Koruba talking, you know Yekewa Koruba talking to Honorable, he's discussing with Honorable Fransafoko. So we don't know as to whether where do you place the horn or as to whether he have the horn with him here. But this was brought into session but per our rules, if there is a decision, happy yes that you cannot do a live coverage in the session. So we are asked not to do a live coverage, but how be it that Honorable Yekewa Koruba is into session today, per the dress, whether we want to ask whether he have the horn. So we have to offer you, we are the first in news and best in entertainment as we bring you all of the latest happening here into session. Let's now cross over to Honorable Ellis Chastas Grand of Grand Jida County.
I'll be ready to vote if we can accept this amendment on the appearances. Number two and number three, that this appearance will be in executive session, so accept.
So he's Honorable Ellis Chastas Grand of Grand Jida County, District Number Three. So alright, this is the key march of the Honorable House of Representatives. Listen to Honorable Yekewa Koruba again. Okay, so Honorable Yekewa Koruba said his trabajo is on the way coming, although his trabajo is on the way coming, so he going to bring out his trabajo as soon as possible. So we are with Honorable Yekewa Koruba, as well, as a matter of fact Honorable Yekewa Koruba is sitting with District Number Nine Representative of Maturado County, Honorable Fransafoko. And Honorable Yekewa Koruba is also District Number Ten Representative of District of Maturado County, District Number Ten. The rest of the lawmakers are here, Honorable Ben Ashon Fofana, District Number Four. Magiwe County is also here in session and the rest of the lawmakers are also here in session, making sure everything goes on here. But let's watch Honorable Yekewa Koruba and Honorable Fransafoko as they have from chat here and some discussion as well. There is Honorable Yekewa Koruba standing again, we don't know what is, what is he going to do again today in the session. So listen to, keep watching us and listen to our live here as we bring you all of the latest happening. The views and comments are very key and paramount to us all today Liberia Television. I'm Jay Kasha reporting from the Honorable House of Representatives. Keep watching us for the very best we have to offer you. We are the first in news and best in entertainment. The Deputy of the Republic of Liberia Deputy Speaker Jessica Ralph into session as well. And Honorable Yekewa Koruba, other lawmakers are here to speak with him as he lost his honor weeks ago. So you see lawmakers are giving to speak to the Deputy Speaker of the Republic of Liberia, Honorable Jay Fulati Kofa as well. So he's there having a conversation with District Five Representative of Magiwe County, Honorable Clarence Gah.
To extend to Liberia, a look of an house, not a city.
So let's now cross over to the Deputy Chief of Clive Askey with you, the communications today in session.
Units of account. The objectives of the project are A, to create a better business environment for increased investment in agro-industrial sector. To create opportunities for private sector investments at the industrial level and coordinate the integration of small agrar farms and agro-processing industry to sustain agro-value genes. And C, to improve capacities and skills to benefit from new agro-business employment and value chain opportunities. The duration of the law shall be forty years, including a grace period between grace period of ten years commencing on the date of the law agreement. During the grace period, the service charge and the commitment charge shall be payable. The law shall be authorized, optimized, amortized over the period of thirty years after the expiration of the grace period at a rate of two percent per hour from the eleven.
So like I told you, Honorable Yekewa Koruba is now into session with his traditional home, with his traditional home. Let's cross over to him as he move out his traditional home. Here's Honorable Yekewa Koruba, sitting with his traditional home, with his traditional home, he is in, that is the home. You seen, you seen Honorable Yekewa Koruba with that home, with that home. So Honorable Yekewa Koruba enter session with the, with our home. So this is the home, this is the home, Honorable Yekewa Koruba. Like I told you in our earlier podcast, we're going to bring you all of the happening as Honorable Yekewa Koruba enter session with homes. So this is the home, this is the home, Honorable Yekewa Koruba enter in session with. So that is, that is the home, that is the home, you seen the Sadiya House having into his hand, also playing with it, he's there. So I'd like to say, keep watching us for the very best we have to offer you, first in news and best in entertainment, Jay Kasha is my man presenting for the Honorable House of Representatives. So keep watching us as we bring you, as we bring you all of the happiness. So you seen Honorable Solomon George also playing with their home, their home that Honorable Yekewa Koruba enter session with. And he, yeah, he saying that he going to beat Honorable Yekewa Koruba with that home. So she has a joke with Honorable Yekewa Koruba. So his District Number Seven Representative of Maturado County, Honorable Solomon George. Like that is the home, they are throwing the ball, the home that earlier throwing the ball that Honorable Yekewa Koruba came into session with earlier, but we were not able to do some broadcast, live broadcast again because it was again our rules. But officially we have showcased the home as well. So last session was a trophy and this session is a home, a traditional home that Honorable Yekewa Koruba had placed as well. How be it, keep watching us on today Liberia Television as we bring you all of the latest happening here on today Liberia Television. So I'd like to say thank you, keep watching us for the very best we have to offer you. As we cross over to the Speaker of the Republic of Liberia. You are just. So let's cross over now to Honorable Maramo Fofana of District Four. So she got more emotion, the motion, the motion work, the motion works, Honorable Maramo Fofana, emotions work definitely. But keep posted as we bring you all of the latest happening here. Now next is the appearance of some government agencies that have been asked to, that have been asked for a plenary summer into session here. So very shortly, in a subsequent time, you're going to see the guys who have been invited to bring, to appear into plenary to give us a latest information or discussions or their place of work and their performance as well. So today Liberia, we are the first in news and we are best, we are fat and fat, we are reliable, we always bring you the latest at your doorpost. And I'm here at the Honorable House of Representatives, bring you the latest here on today Liberia. Keep posted as we bring you all of the happiness here. But the latest news in session is Honorable Yekewa Koruba enter session with a traditional home.
Generous, profound compliments in here with right, to pray generous indulgence to invite Dr Samuel K Umar, Senior President of the Lufa County Dominical College, along with the Minister of Education, to appear before this Honorable by the prayers, the numerous complainants filed against Dr Umar at the college from, I mean, I can't remember, Igama, at the college from the faculty, staff and students. Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, upon receiving numerous complaints from faculty and students from Lufa County Dominical College, and this by their force need by different deforens in county, but to know a day, the committee on education decided to invite Dr Samuel K Umar, Senior Professor, Florida, to accept the nature of the faculty members and students assigned at the college. In the communication, Dr Umar, Dr Umar Committee requested submission of formal detail, detailed information on one report on all finances for the past immediate two academic years, two records on the current enrollment of employees at the college, three records on current enrollment at the college, four records on remittances from the government of Liberia, five records of fees, collections from students.
Honorable Yekewa Koruba is also having a confrontation with the wish and other Chairman, Honorable Johnson Guaplu there. So folks, I'd like to say, keep watching us on today Liberia Television, first in news and best in entertainment. As a matter of fact, Emmanuel is watching us from Johnson Bay and Emmanuel is watching us from Johnson Bay. The CEO of this lovely institution is also watching us from the US, the United States of America, who's, have a CEO, the lovely CEO of this institution is also watching us with many, many, as it is also watching us as well, it's also watching us as well, including Jenkins, who is also watching on this live podcast. So keep watching us for the very best we have to offer you. But having be it Honorable Yekewa Koruba still in session with his traditional home, let's, let's now bring you the traditional home.
Another president officer, it is why late soon, now that Lufa County Dominical College is in chaos, remaining this messy situation, we must take hold, we must take hold, rigorous and right decisions that will address the issue. Therefore, the lead for Dr Umar, President of the Lufa County Dominical College, along with the Minister of Education to appear before Canada's law court, why he should not be a content for, for impeding the work of the committee and provide the committee and documents requested by the committee on education before the date of their appearance. Please accept my assurances of highest esteem as we honestly apply. As we honestly represent our people and protect their interests at any point in time, sincerely yours, Honorable Malawo Bifan, representing natural discipline of Lufa County and chairperson of education and public administration. Mr Speaker, Mr Co-President Officer, Honorable ladies and gentlemen, that was the reading of the communication from Honorable Fofana of Lufa County. Thank you, sir.
So you just listened to a communication from the, the, from Honorable Maramo Fofana, like District Number Four, Lufa County, here she, like over communication, just read live, the Deputy Chief like as the communications be read on flow. So as I say, I'd like to say, like you're doing a common authority, she have come to represent District Number Four, like Lufa County District Number Four.
Praying for the indulgence of the Honorable House to invite the twenty third president of the Lufa County Dominical College, Dr Samuel K Umar, Senior Umar, Senior and the Minister of Education to address themselves to numerous complaints against Dr Umar from the faculty and students of the college, what is a very pleasure in my building consensus. Honorable, Honorable Jimmy, there were you.
Thank you to Speaker, Co-President and distinguished colleagues. I've listened to the reading of this communication before by our esteemed colleagues from the great county of Lufa County, Honorable Maramo Fofana, requesting the indulgence of this plenary to invite the Minister of Education, the President of the Lufa County College and others, the speaker have moved that this communication being received noted and be placed on the next, on the agenda for our next year based on the fact that. Oh, that's what I said, it's been received enough and be placed on our next. So appear, appear next on turn six, so appear on turn seven.
So this is Honorable Jimmy Smith, Honorable Jimmy Smith of District Number Two, Maturado County, retired as well. So indeed, I'd like to say, this is today Liberia Television coming live to you, Darros is watching us, Darros is watching us from District Number Five, Real Light, District Number Five, is Real Light out of District Number Five, that is the question. So let's cross over to Honorable CB.
At the moment, I'll be ready to vote. Considering it's a higher education issue, I would like to recall the, the Commission on Higher Education to be present as well. With that reinforcement.
Well, listen to the floor as we said.
So he have accepted eight as well. So now it's the appearance of the Lufa, the Liberia National Police. So next is the appearance. So Ambassador Emmanuel Kewa, Honorable Nawajion is watching us, Moro Espase is also watching us live here on this broadcast. So we like to say thanks for watching us and keep watching us for the very best we have to offer you today Liberia Television, first in news and best in entertainment. We are fat and fat, reliable and we are the latest here. Still within the session here with the fifty-four, last name, let's list of, I'm Jay Kasha, keep watching us on today Liberia Television, Honorable District Number Four Representative of Nimac County, Honorable Kumpu Kagon is also here having shown our, so we, we is here, District Number Four Representative of Magiwe County is also here. The rest of the lawmakers are here, Honorable Clarence Massa, of District Number Three, Lufa County is also here, including the living letter, CEO for the Bon Legislative Caucus, Honorable Wema Brish Mesa of District Number Six is also here. Now as a matter of fact, the big news here is Honorable Marvin Cole have taken the, the traditional home, the traditional home of Yekewa Koruba, he have escaped out of the session with it in a jovial form and manner, he have carried the, the traditional home of Honorable Yekewa Koruba out of the session here. So George is also watching us live from Guinea, Konokwe. And Mark, so Fedi is also watching us. You know, your questions Mark having and he did not, he came peacefully with a traditional home, that's all, Honorable Yekewa Koruba, the information here is he came peacefully with his traditional home, just only with his traditional home and insult to the president.
From the Sadiya House, that the character, traditional idea. Madam Chief Boy, do you have any information about the, the no appearance of the Justice Minister, Police, Inspector General and the law enforcement agency?
Mr Speaker, it's a Co-President Officer, Honorable ladies and gentlemen, I have learned of what you thought, if you find that yes, I'm not here.
Of course, pay, say, say on each mail, pay is also watching us for South Korea and Saturday, Zanwe is also watching us from GSA, from the USA as well. Let's cross over to Honorable Afar Kokos Jones. Elashar Tia is also watching us through this live broadcast here. Elashar is watching us from, he's watching us from Madison, from Wakosi, US of A. And Jay Kasha, bring you the latest happening at the Honorable House of Representatives here. So Saturday, Zanwe is also watching us from the US of A.
Honorable President, Co-President colleagues, Honorable Speaker, my headquarters is, I'm aware that the Labrador National Police and the Ministry of Justice should have appeared on Tuesday and it did not because of one or two engagement that we have. I would want to know whether there was a follow-up communication sent, rescheduling the appearance for today. So I want for our secretary to please inform this body before we make any decision.
Is our District Number Two Representative of Magiwe County, Honorable Afar Kokos Jones.
Can you give us any information regarding the transmission of information requesting their presence here and how was it treated by the? And how was it treated by the, uh, the various, uh, agencies?
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Presiding Officer, Honorable Ladies and Gentlemen. Central to your inquiry, yes, secretary, this was undated by this, by this body.
Yeah, thank you very much, Honorable for your observation, we have done a live broadcast. Honorable, uh, please inform us as to what it was, uh, you mean, yeah, what it was.
Today Liberia Television coming live to you from the Honorable House of Representatives. Jay Kasha is mine on this presentation here. Then I shall be from our District Number Four, Maghidi County.
To ensure that they will receive any term they will receive, that's why I have followed it. Your good counsel to me now.
Mister Speaker, Co-Presiding Officer, Honorable ladies and gentlemen, the communication for the, for the Inspector General, uh, the National Police was received by Victor S. Camerar on the eighth day of, of, of February twenty-two. We have the contact of that person here for the communication for the Labrador Justice Enforcement Agency. It was signed for by Samuel M. Lawa. For the communication for the Honorable Minister of Justice, assigned for by, by Mr. Henry Watson on yesterday ten AM. Mister Speaker, that answers.
Thank you, thank you very much, uh.
Uh, she's the chief clerk of the Republic of Liberia, the Honorable House of Representatives, the national legislature, the fifty-fourth national legislature. Uh, and they debited there with her comparing some documentaries and, uh, some documentaries, comparison and notes there as well. So District, District Number Four, Representative of Maghidi County, uh, is here, most great in the session. And, uh, so folks, I like to say, thanks very much for watching us on today Liberia Television. We are the first in news, best in entertainment, fat and fragile. We always coming close to your doorpost as we bring you all of the happiness. I like to say, thanks, I have been Jay Kasha, it's now time for executive in, in the Honorable House of Representatives. I have been Jay Kasha, bring you the live broadcast, thanks for watching us on this live.